We will now call the special meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Wednesday, December 6, 2023, to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll? Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Cordova?
Present.
Councilmember Ball?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dirk Starbuck?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
Please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Tonight's special meeting is to present the report on financial feasibility of the Pale Blue Dot proposal, development of a space center project on approximately 82 acres, including and adjacent to Ken Adam Park. We will start with Mr. Malave to give us an overview of the staff report, and then we'll hand it off to the consultant. That will be followed by Pale Blue Dot having a 20-minute presentation. Then we'll go to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to council for Q and A of the staff report, the consultant, or the Pale Blue Dot representatives. Mr. Malave, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for being here tonight for this special meeting on Wednesday. We are here to discuss the Pale Blue Dot project, and the topic tonight is the financial feasibility report that Pale Blue Dot prepared, and our city consultants review an analysis of that report. As background, in 2019, the city entered into memorandum of understanding with Pale Blue Dot. That provides a period that the city will exclusively negotiate with only Pale Blue Dot for development of a space center project on 82 acres that's up on the Ken Adam Park parcel at the northern part of the city. Attachment one to the staff report is the most recent, October 2023, summary of the Pale Blue Dot conceptual project. And so where we are in this, we're going through the steps of the memorandum of understanding that we entered into, and one of the steps was for Pale Blue Dot to provide a concept and feasibility study for its proposed project. And that was due at the end of last year, 2022. The developer did provide that by the end of last year, 2022, and city had 60 days to provide a response. We got an extension on that, and on April 18th, city council had a meeting to review the concept and feasibility study and experience design plan, and we had a consultant report at that meeting to give an overview. When the council reviewed the conclusions of that consultant, there was one area that the council wanted some further information on because the consultant, Kaiser Marston, had admitted, actually, that it did not have experience in theme park revenues and costs. So in that one part, the council directed staff to hire a second consultant that had experience in theme park feasibility and theme park attraction revenues and cost estimating. After the April 18th meeting, Pale Blue Dot told the city that it needed some additional time to revise its financial projections and financial estimates for its project because it wanted the city's subsequent consultant to review some updated numbers. And in August of 2023, Pale Blue Dot submitted its updated project financials and an updated financial feasibility analysis. So with those updated financials, the city hired Pro forma Advisors LLC, which is a consulting firm, and the main consultant working on the project for the city is named Mark Dvorak, and he's here over at the staff table tonight to provide his presentation. He will go through his background and his experience in theme park and amusement park and water park and other types of attractions, including experience in space tourism attractions. He prepared a report that the council received the conclusions of on November 7th of this year, and council decided, Mr. Dvorak was not able to be here in person at that November 7th meeting, so the council decided to schedule this meeting where we have Mr. Dvorak here in person to present the results of his report. In the meantime, on November 24th, Pale Blue Dot provided a response letter to Mr. Dvorak's original report, and Mr. Dvorak has made some, that response letter is attached to your staff report tonight. Mr. Dvorak made some revisions to his report and has a final revised report that's attachment number four to your staff report tonight, which is what he will present. And finally, the last interesting item of information is up until December 1st, which is last Friday, Pale Blue Dot had designated its numerical project projections and numerical cost estimates and revenues, attendance figures, as its confidential proprietary information, and was holding, pursuant to our agreement in the MOU, we were keeping those figures confidential because Pale Blue Dot had designated them as confidential. Last Friday, Pale Blue Dot agreed to make all of the consultants' reports, including all of the numbers, public, as well as make its response letter to the original report public. So all of the information in the reports have now been attached to the staff report, and all of that information is now public and can be discussed tonight. Simultaneously with all this, these feasibility steps under the MOU, the city is concurrently negotiating the disposition and development agreement with the developer that will govern the eventual sale of the site and how the entitlement process through the planning commission and through the city council for all the land use approvals will occur, and it also will include protections for the city in the event that the project is not successful and stops operating. There will be protections for the city such as bonds or rights of reverter for the city to take back control and ownership of the property. That is currently being negotiated between the city and Pale Blue Dot. So confirming the project's financial feasibility at this early conceptual stage is important so that the council can be assured that the project is realistic, at least realistic enough to continue on with spending city time, continuing on with the proceeding towards this project, and that the benefits of continuing to pursue the project outweigh the opportunity cost, holding back the land when it could be being used for other potential uses. So that concludes my part of the staff report tonight. I'm, of course, available for any questions later, but I'm going to now throw it over to Mark Dvorak of Pro forma Advisors to give his summary and PowerPoint of his presentation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll do it from here because my eyes are not good enough, so I need to read it off the screen to know where I am. Let's see here.
It doesn't appear that the remote is working for him from that distance, so maybe he could give it back and you could advance the slides for him as he requests. All right, we got that figured out?
All right. So Jeff gave a little bit of background, but I'll do it on myself. What we do, just so you know who's talking to you, Pro forma Advisors is a consultancy we focus on, on the analysis of real estate projects that have an intersection with leisure. Our targeted focus really is the market analysis and financial feasibility of these projects. We don't have upstream or downstream type work that would complicate our views of these with any additional potential projects. We really kind of look at this as what we think they are. Our background, we do these projects across the world, different types, different owners, different folks who are clients. We were founded in 2008 by partners who were actually part of a company called ERA. ERA was the original land use economics consultant for Disney. They kind of created the methodology that really is looked at now and used extensively when you look at leisure real estate development, and we continue to use this methodology along with increasing the technology parts of it, data access, and some other things. So. Next slide just shows us some of the different places and projects we've worked on and some of the different clients. I won't dwell on that. So again, the engagement was, whoops, discussed by Jeff. Pale Blue Dot has presented a plan with projections. After an initial review by Kaiser Marston focusing on the real estate, we were brought on to really focus on our specialty, which is making some opinions on what the financials were for the attraction part of the project. In that, you know, we did some analysis ourself, but really our role in this was to look at what was presented and have a second opinion on that. So with that, we break the project into four distinct pieces, and that'll be, we'll have commentary and summaries on each one, because each of these four elements works somewhat independently of the rest. So the attraction itself is really looking at somebody who comes for the day, pays to enter, and then is available to all the different activities and access within the site. They proposed a hotel, which the model of that hotel is that somebody would stay at the hotel and also have access to the attraction with particularly special features to make it more inclusive. There are different examples of that around, and I believe it was not assumed to act like a normal hotel within the market where it could just market to somebody just for the room. It really was a package deal. A space camp, which is a separate physical location with separate physical accommodations for program or for the campers, and then that would really focus on a different target market. They would have access to the attraction, but really the business model for the camp would be separate. And then there was an event program that would be able to host events that would, again, be separate from the attraction and that. So really four business lines going on at the same time. This is now superfluous. Originally, there was no financial numbers that could be presented. This presentation does not have them, but you actually have the report, which actually references some of the additional information provided by Pale Blue Dot. So now, really a summary of our findings from the report. We understand that the concept and the program is not finalized, but we obviously had to use something to look at to go through the review and the associated financials with it. We understand that this can change depending on a lot of different things, but we do say that, you know, changes that occur have to have commensurate impacts on budgets and operational projections and such. So as it moves forward, you can't change one without at least looking at the other. With respect to the actual content and scale, when we look at that, we find that really the project is most similar to other space attractions, not necessarily in this market, but around the United States. With regard to how it compares to a traditional theme or amusement park, it is smaller in size. There are fewer physical attractions or activities in the package unless what we call THRC or theoretical hourly ride capacity. So how many things can be done in an hour at any level? And in the report, you can see references to the different scales for the different types of product. With regard to high-profile space or space attractions like Kennedy Space Center and Johnson Space Center, it does have authenticity from a standpoint of being associated with at least a viewing platform for launches, but it should be noted that some of the benchmarks really do go beyond and have access into some of the NASA assets, tour onsite, going through different things. So that was one of the differences between it from an attraction level and the space attraction, the other space attraction benchmarks. The mission statement of the project is stated to be very space science, future, space travel oriented, so it does not have a lot of fictional stories or intellectual property. I use the example of, say, Star Wars. So it really is skewed toward an entertainment and educational attraction, not necessarily just a pure amusement attraction. So in reviewing the overall content against different benchmarks, both space and other, we believe that the length of stay, which we believe to be one to three hours, most likely on the scale, the pricing, the market penetration, financial performance, really should act more like the space attraction benchmarks than theme park benchmarks in the market. Even though most major space attractions still offer some kind of facility tour, which does lengthen their length of stay, we feel that these are the ones that provide the most insight into how the space attraction here might work. So as we break this down, we're now focusing on the attraction, which is the ticketed gated entry, that first box. There are two different methodologies. We have a methodology we use, the project, the developer had a group that had an alternative methodology. Ours, again, is really based on looking at benchmarks and applying those to the same equivalent markets. The developer benchmark was more of a survey-driven and then using certain types of filters down to get to essentially penetration rates, although they both look at different markets and applying how many people may come out of that. As they compare, again, we didn't have the numbers. You can see some of the numbers in the report now. There were some differences. Our number, using our methodology, was about 65% to 75% of what the developer projection was. Based on that, it was mostly a lower amount coming out of the current existing primary markets, the penetration rates of those existing residents, and the one to, zero to two-hour drive time. Actually, our number was higher in the number of overnight visitors that might visit the attraction relative to two. And then there was a difference in school groups. They had an independent view of school groups. Our methodology, because the benchmarks included school groups, it was inherent in our number. With regard to the attraction revenue projections, the revenue per guest is kind of a very common benchmark to look at when identifying and looking at attractions. The numbers that were presented, we believe, are higher than we've seen in other benchmarks, both across the board, both in space attractions and in theme parks. Again, with a different length of stay, the amount of revenue that one can get for that product is constrained, and we believe that the numbers in there might be difficult to attain. Those premiums aren't attained. You either drop price to get attendance levels higher, or you maintain your higher prices. That's a yield management technique that is used in a lot of attractions, but if the yields that are not met based on the current model, then the overall revenues commensurate really may not be met. Relative to the, what we call in-park spending, or how much is spent inside while they're visiting, the ratios that were in the developer model are within reasonable ranges, but because of their higher base per cap, some of the absolute numbers are a little bit higher, particularly when you look at a shorter length of stay. You don't have as much time, so you don't have as much time to spend on different things like lunches and dinners in there. So that was a comment. With regard to the overall budget of the project, again, we did not look at what they presented and went through a cost analysis to whether they could build what they say they could build. But generally speaking, the amount of budget they have relative to the visitation, that ratio is kind of a first-level test that's used to say, is this in the reasonable range? Has to go to the second-level test to understand, is there a market there that can get to the attendance level? But basically, the content of the budget that they have should be enough to build something that would support those attendance levels as long as the market is there. In absolute terms, though, the budget is a fraction of what a destination or a large theme park would be. Typically, a theme park is anywhere now probably from a billion to $3 billion to develop what people's expectations are of that product. With regard to space camps, camps are popular, and there's obviously enough market in Southern California. People do travel because there are a longer length of stay. So generally, the scale of the camp, we didn't feel that was unreasonable to generate the attendance levels that they were talking about, and they seemed to have enough capacity to support those. Again, what we did do is look at some comparable camps and looked at the revenue per camper just to see if it was within a reasonable range. And again, felt like that when we looked at benchmarks, that the actual revenue per camper day were a little bit lower than what was being projected at the developer. So, and again, you know, space camps typically going after that market, there is a lot of downward pressure on pricing, especially if you're trying to get, you know, students and such. With regard to margins of space camps, again, margins are usually also a little bit challenged. They have a fair amount of expenses because you're feeding, you have extra staff to deal with the parent or deal with the children. So typically, the margins of a space camp are not as high as what would be in an attraction, so there was something to look at there. You know, a lot of camps end up being nonprofits because of some of these pressures. Again, not impossible to be a for-profit, but a lot of challenges on the revenue side and the operating cost side. So then the overall operating margin of the attraction, again, the benchmarks that were provided were theme park. Theme parks tend to have a slightly higher operating margin because they're putting so much money into the capital, you know, the plant, you know, all the rides, you know, the billion dollars of investment, so they need a fairly high rate of return over what it costs to operate. Typically, when you do a smaller project, you know, the margins are still higher than a normal business that have a high cost of goods, but maybe slightly less than the benchmark theme parks that were used. Again, because of the higher revenue assumptions, the actual operating costs that were presented in the financial model, probably are in absolute terms enough to cover the operation of the park because they're applied against the higher revenue level. So in that sense, it may have evened out. Also, just projects like this, there's a bottom line below EBITDA or the profitability of reinvestment because you need to reinvent yourself to bring people back, whether it's a theme park, museum, or the like. So there's usually this capital capex or capital investment that is allocated after the bottom line. That number is in a theme park anywhere from 6% to 10%. It's a little lower in other types of projects, but the number in the developer was slightly lower than we would have thought would have been appropriate. And then we get to the last element of this, and that's deciphering what is investor risk versus what is risk of the project operating. Again, attractions like this, the budget or the cost of it is really upfront. You build something that's worth coming to. The actual operating cost is not high relative to the overall development budget. So what ends up happening is that target margins are higher in this model. So what happens is if you don't necessarily meet your projections, you still have revenues that exceed your operating costs. It's just that the money that can be applied to the investment is lower. Now then that becomes an investor risk, not necessarily an operational risk. So, you know, it's not impossible for a project to not have enough surplus, but generally speaking, the way they're structured, you know, the money's upfront, the operations is a certain level. If you can exceed that level in revenue, you maintain operations going. So it becomes now, the operating risk is lowered, although as an investor, they may not necessarily get the returns they want. So it's understanding that those two things are separate. Now, sometimes your capital structure does include debt. Now, if you have debt and you have interest expenses, you know, now you have multiple parties and interest needs to be met. But typically, even in those situations, as long as there's a surplus, the operations will maintain. It just may be that, you know, there's a change in ownership and how that is restructured. But generally, you would only stop operating if you could not generate more revenue than your day-to-day operating expenses. So with that, you know, the investor who has to evaluate this is most at risk for it, whereas there's a lesser risk for the actual operations of it. So that was really the summary of our role in just having an opinion and reviewing the developer financial projections.
All right, thank you. Are there any specific questions at the moment before we go to Mr. Frank? Councilmember Ball?
So I don't have any specific questions, but I'm just feeling bad because there are at least three chairs up here that are empty, and there's a bunch of people that I feel might not last on their feet for an hour or two. I'm just curious if we have any more chairs or way to accommodate a few people, and then I'll save my questions for later.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Frank?
Thank you. While we're teeing that up, I want to thank the city council for putting this on for a special night. I know it's a bit of an imposition to everyone, and also to everyone that's, who's come out here, hopefully to support us, but I think it's, you know, democracy in action. This is how things work. I'm Steve Frank, the founder and CEO. This is Dr. Debbie Blow. Debbie is, you may know, was the interim superintendent here in Lompoc and has been superintendent up in Orkit and down, up in Silicon Valley, and she'll give her background. So we're super lucky to have her, and she's going to walk us through some of the educational parts of our project. Okay. This just says I'm not selling you any securities because my SEC securities lawyer will get on my case, so I just want to make sure that we are a Delaware. We started off as a Delaware LLC, and we're now a Delaware C Corporation, so we do sell stock. Look, we're trying to do something pretty special. We're going back to the moon, and then we're going to Mars, and we want to teach the science and tell that story of mankind's or humankind's next great adventure. And so if you're a certain age, of which I am, you know, you watched this on TV, on a black and white TV many years ago. Well, our kids or grandkids are going to watch that in 2027, so we want to tell that story. We want to do this, we want to engage in a worldwide audience, and we want to do that through great storytelling. Number three, we want to use, there's an earth science, we don't talk about it too much, but there's an earth science component of this or earth observation that helps us, will help us drive to a better future for Spaceship Earth. And as Mr. Dvorak kind of touched on, we're proposing something that's kind of completely a new genre of enriched education entertainment destination. I think I'm going to wait a minute until the...
Let's bring some of them up front, Stephen, because you want to keep the aisles clear for emergency exit if anything were to... for emergency exit if anything were to need to.
So I know no one likes to sit in the front row, but there's like half a dozen seats Okay, so while we're getting kind of sorted, so these are the things we want to talk about. I won't go through them all, but I think it's, you just heard the introduction. I want to just go through kind of what we see as the process. We'll go through some specifics on the PFA report and also lessons learned that we gained from their report. Camp Odyssey is really the space camp, so Space Camp is actually trademarked by those guys, so we can't use that name, and they've already written me a nasty letter. So, and Debbie will talk about the global space opportunity. This is really a key, really essential to what we're trying to do. We'll also talk about some local questions and issues. What's it going to cost? What's the benefits? How will work, we hope with NASA and Vandenberg? And then kind of, one of the things that we definitely want to talk about is kind of cities' risk and investor risk and potential failure scenarios, and then a kind of summary and conclusions. So this is kind of where we are. So this is how we see things proceeding. We're in conceptual design. We signed that MEU that expires at the end of December and end of this month. We've done a friend, friends and family capital raise. We have investors everywhere from San Diego to Orange County to LA to here to Florida to London. So, so it's about a half dozen or so people, and we're in the process of negotiating a lease and the DDA, and that dashed line just indicates we're kind of right at the end of that conceptual design phase. The schematic design is kind of next, so that's, we'll raise seed capital for that. There's a, going to be a number of opportunities to do value engineering and kind of change the program as we kind of need to walk through that. We'll do capacity modeling, so if it turns out that we have, we lack capacity with certain areas, we'll, we'll, we'll add that capacity, and that's the time to do that. And then we'll also be going through the entitlement process. And schematic design is kind of four to six months. Then design develop again, another, now the design is kind of getting really narrow, and it's getting very late in the game to make changes, but again, we'll still do value engineering. We, hopefully, will get entitlement at that point. We'll raise probably a Series A round of capital. And then we go to construction, first, you know, construction documents, bidding, Series B, debt. You need to have a lot of money at that point because a lot of people want 50% down payments on their ride and show, so, and then we'll draw permits, of course, and then, of course, opening and test and train. So that's kind of the process, and like I said, we're kind of right at the end of conceptual One of the, one of the things that Mr. Dvorak mentioned is the length of stay is, I think you said one to three hours. We, we really disagree with that. There's, if you look at, and I will give a copy of this to the City Council on a break, but this stuff, by the way, there's a lot of information now on the city's website, including the pro formas, initial report, our response, their revised report, their presentation, I guess this presentation will be on there too, but there's a lot of information there. So if you're interested in kind of going through these numbers, you can find them, you can find them there. We think, we designed this purposely to be six to eight hours. There's 24 events there on that list, which you can't read, but, and like I said, we'll do, if we're short of capacity in something, we don't have enough of something, we'll do the capacity modeling in a schematic design. So that's kind of the next step. And we have software, not me, but my guys have software, which will kind of watch people move from event to event to event and kind of say, look, we, we clearly don't have enough bathrooms in that location. We need to add some, and that's going to cost us a million dollars, and we got to find a million, take a million out from someplace else. So that's kind of how that will work. But like I said, our letter has many of those details, and I'll give the City Council a better copy of that in, on a break. As Mr., as Mark said, there's kind of two ways to skin this cat if you're trying to figure out demand sizing. One way is what our guys did, which are Integrated Insights up there, they take the total market over 75, I won't, I'm not going to go through this whole thing, but basically, you take the total market out to 75 miles, you qualify that market. How many of those people make more than $75,000 a year so they can afford to come, household income? How many are aware of this opportunity and how many say they'll actually come? And you kind of narrow that down to a much finer point. We paid extra money. We, we did a survey of 800 people that were space enthusiasts, that were willing to, you know, we paid them money to sit down, and they looked at our program and said how much, and we asked them how much they would pay to do that. And the number was over $100, right? So that they said they would pay to, for our program. So, and then we, and I'll talk about how we, we manage, we move the cost down. So $100, our, our face, our number is $77 is that we're going to use, and then we'll yield it down to about $58. So I want to spend a lot of time on this. Our, this is, our integrated insight number was 303,000 attendees, including, including 65,000 school kids. And then we jumped it because, I don't know if you know this, there's like 26,000 hotel rooms between Northern Ventura County and San Simeon, right? So there's a lot of people staying in hotels that we think are potentially people that will come. So we moved our number up a little bit aggressive, aggressive, more aggressive, about 10% higher than the integrated insight number. Apologies, I thought you, I thought this actually graph was really good, so I kind of wonder why my guys didn't show me this thing, but anyway. This is how PFA did. Typically, you know, you would take people that live within, within 30 minutes, 60 minutes, 90 minutes, 120 minutes, and you kind of figure out how many, and you apply different percentages, and how many will come based on those percentages. And then you look at the visitor market, that's the hotel market, but that hotel market only goes out to 60 minutes. So for instance, San Luis Obispo is, I think, is missing there. So, and those different colored blues are the drive times into Lompoc. Mark mentioned this, this issue about capital budgeting and capex, we hear you. Okay, so typically, yes, theme parks spend 6% to 10% of annual revenues on capex. That's because they're really big, they got a lot going on, and they have to refresh the Matterhorn and, you know, their rides kind of every three or four years to get people to kind of come back. And by the way, a lot of that stuff is mechanical, so it's expensive to refresh. Ours is going to be much more software related, so we can change, you know, this afternoon or this morning, it's mission to moon, to the moon, and then the afternoon, it's mission to Mars, that kind of thing. So we're going to, with a software point of view, software is still expensive, but it allows us to kind of move and change things. Right now, we're expensing 2% of revenues every year in the income statement to maintenance, basically, and then we were capitalizing 2% starting in year four. Why? Because we're brand new and we don't need to kind of rebuild things. But in hindsight, you know, we get the message, so we'll take a look at moving that probably into year three, and we'll probably go to 4% to 8% of revenue as a capex cost. That capex cost is used to, you know, build new rides and build new software, and then you capitalize it to the balance sheet, so you can write it off over like 20 years. Dr. Blow is going to talk to these issues.
Well, why do we need this? Why is this important? And I will tell you it's important because look, look at this chart. This economy is booming. 500 billion, excuse me, in 2020, projected in 2045 to go to 3 trillion in revenues. And we, we need to prepare our students, we need to prepare the future employees that are going to take these jobs. And the projections are, we don't have enough students in the pipeline to do that. So it's something like this that's going to spark those students and create an interest in this. And as Steve mentioned, I do need to remind you all, a year ago at this time, I was the interim superintendent in Lompoc Unified School District. I really enjoyed my time here, and it was through that that I learned about this project. I attended a couple meetings, and it really struck a chord with me because I believe very much in hands-on STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math instruction for students. Too often, we're just preaching to students, and we're not giving them the opportunity to actually try things out for themselves. And that's where they really learn, when they experiment and try things. So we're facing a crisis in the United States right now. If you look, the majority of STEM graduates come from China, followed by India, and yes, those are larger countries, but the United States is far below that. And then you look at the United States' performance over on the right, and we're way down there. And it's because we need to do more things to get students interested in these STEM careers, and that happens through exposure. Oftentimes, we don't know about a career if we don't have an opportunity to experience it, and it's something like going to Camp Odyssey or a field trip to the space camp that's going to make a difference and start encouraging students. And if we look at our students and what they say they want to be, okay, the boys want to be professional athletes. Well, that's a very, very small percentage that's going to be able to do that. And you look at some of the others, YouTuber, musicians, gamers, girls at least are at the top with doctors and nurses, but then they go down to actress, musician. Some of these are just not realistic, and particularly, I have to make a plug here for girls, there's a real shortage of girls in those STEM careers. So this is an opportunity for us to start encouraging women to go into those fields because there are great opportunities, great high-paying jobs, and some of them don't even require a college degree. But again, it's that idea of exposure that will help us get there. I am very confident that once this is built, there will be no problem filling the camps and filling the trips. These are numbers from 2003 through 2023 with the attendance, and as if you look at that, our goal of 65,000 students, that's easily going to be achieved. The other thing that I think is important is you look at sixth grade camp, that's very popular. Majority of students in California in both private and public schools attend sixth grade camp. As I was doing this research, I talked with some of the camps. The camp that students attend in San Luis Obispo County has a waiting list. They can't fit all the students. Another one is Astro Camp. I'll talk a little bit about that. That's, they have a waiting list as well. So there is a need for more opportunities like this. To give you a comparison on costs, this is very, very reasonable when you look. Now, a lot of these are more than three days, two nights. Our current Lompoc sixth graders are a three-day, two-night camp that they attend, but when you divide them out by the cost per day, you can see that our projected costs are very reasonable and will be a bargain for our communities. There's Astro Camp that I mentioned there, you know, it's $309 a day compared to what we're proposing. Astro Camp is a space-themed camp, but it's more like table talk scenarios. It's not the hands-on opportunities like the students would have at this camp. And then I do want to highlight the educational programs with this, and one of the things I want to really emphasize is this is not just about the rides. This is about the educational component and what it will bring to the students. So there's a variety of things. The K-12 programs, student field trips. These are one-day field trips, but they will have a highlighted pre-learning that the teachers will provide. They'll attend the field trip followed by a follow-up lesson, and it's not about the rides. It's, it's more, the students will actually be in solving issues, solving problems. Multi-day overnight, this is the camp experience. Students will work in teams, they'll be in a mission, something will go wrong in the mission, and they're going to have to work together to figure out how to solve that. So again, it's that really high hands-on experiential learning. Opportunity for high school internships. High school students will be able to do things in the camp. For example, there will be a culinary strand to this, so students could actually learn about that and partake and be in part of the jobs. Career technical education is a very prominent component in California education right now, and there are strands through this, like hospitality, again, the culinary arts, as well as the technical arts. Students will be able to actually get credit while they're doing this. Tied with that is Allen Hancock shared programs where they may even be able to get high credit for Allen Hancock College while they're still in high school. So opportunities there. And then the aerospace certification, there's a program through Flight Works Alabama. Lompoc Unified School District has an adult education component, and students will be able to go through this. They're very interested in providing that. When they graduate, they'll be able to walk into a paying job. And then in addition to the educational piece, there's a many opportunities for students and adults, and I want to say adults because we learned that adults want to be part of this too, or they want to bring their family and be, the parents want to experience it with their children. They can stay in the dorms with their family during the summer months when we're not doing the educational programs during the school year. There's opportunities for Dummer Day Academy. Local youth could attend during, during the summer, not have the overnight, but they could experience the whole program during, during the day. Summer camps, as I mentioned, we, there's a shortage of girls in this program, so providing a Girls in STEM camp during the summer where it's just focusing on girls and providing them with that opportunity and excitement. Something that's really, I think, exciting too would be a camp for teachers, where they would be experiencing what the students experience, but it would help them in improving their instruction in the STEM fields. And then summer intensive camp could even be worldwide where we bring in students from around the world. So this is kind of what Camp Odyssey would look like in the three-day scenario. Elementary is kind of where we're concentrating, fourth, fifth, sixth grade, but middle school would be where science teachers could bring their students for a camp and high school. Here's what a day would look like. Flight test, rover course, rocket range, the SIM lab where they're having to do something. I don't know if any of you participated in an escape room, but it'd be kind of like that, where they would have a mission that they would have to be complete, and they would have to work together as a team and learn skills and complete that mission. And then, as we said, they'd get a certificate of completion and all the activities and programs. Again, we'd also like to encourage adult groups. It's something they could come in and learn with.
So, so we've been, we've been, I wanted, I want to answer some of the questions that we kind of get when we've talked to people, and one of them is, well, what is it going to cost, you know, locally, right? So we're kind, and this is tentative. I mean, we're a long ways from this, but this is kind of tentative. So we think kids zero to three, they go in for free. Children, three to, well, we originally started at 12, but okay, three to 16, let's, let's, we'll think about that, but that's a 30 to 40% discount. And then adults 16 plus, 77, again, when we market tested this, it came in over $100. We chopped the price to 77, and then we discounted, yield it down to, with discounts. So if you're first responder, local resident, military, active duty, retired, those kind of things, you get discounts, and that'll come down to then $58 or so. come down to then $58 or so. Also, if you're a resident, now, we need to figure out, how do we exactly determine that? Is that a California license, or is that some kind of a Lompoc registration for voting? We haven't figured that part out yet, but we will. Maybe it's Santa Barbara County resident. But 30% to 40% reduction for those people, if you're a resident, so the people in this room for the most part. We'll have free entry days, at least one per quarter, so at least four times a year. And we'll have an annual family pass. And that number for family pass is probably roughly twice the marquee price, roughly. We'll have, we have an educate, we've started an educational foundation. We need to go through the process with the IRS to get that to be a 501(c)(3). But, and the reason why is a lot of, like, the base in the school districts don't want to face off, they want to face off against a nonprofit. So, and we'll have vouchers for school districts. What are the benefits to Lompoc? Of course, it's quite important, obviously. We think 350 jobs, another 50 jobs in high season in the summertime. This is about a $40 million annual business, year three. It's about, we think about four to five million of tax uplift to the city every year. So four million a year over 20 years is $80 million. You know, that buys a lot more police, fire, there's going to be a whole lot of things that we're going to need. So you'll have to be in here making sure the city council is spending that money wisely. We think it increases Lompoc Valley home values. I think we're starting to see that already. We think there's going to be an increase in hotel occupancy, and we think we'll need more hotels, so you'll need to build more hotels, right? So, and we think we also will spread the utility cost for water, sewer, electric across a wider base. So hopefully, that'll reduce the need to have price increases there. Probably, pretty importantly, obviously, is, particularly considering SpaceX news a couple of days ago, can you imagine 100, can we imagine three or four? I've been here for quite a while. I mean, 2018 on this evolution. So now they're talking about 100 launches per year. Wow, because it used to be like 10, you know, and maybe even less sometimes. So that really kind of positions us to be kind of the gateway for the West Coast space industry, at least in the launch industry. So maybe we should think about changing the name to Rocket Town. Can we do that? I don't know. But anyway, the educational impact, it's last up there? It's definitely not last in importance because it's hugely important. And it's not just Lompoc, it's kind of the whole county, we think. So we think there's a lot of benefits to the city. Now, and I know that, I know that people say, yeah, you developer guys, you always put up big numbers up there. But we think those numbers are pretty solid. We've been asked, okay, how are you going to work with local partners? Hangar One, which is about 9,000 square foot, there's what we call a COSM Omni Dome in there, which allows us to put all kinds of different software. You can get, if you want to, you could, we could arrange for you to get married on Mars, you know, in the Omni Dome. So, we're going to have in there about 2,000 square feet, kind of in the foyer, something called the Hall for Space Innovation, and that'll be rotating exhibits from NASA and JPL and the space industry, people like that. So there's a whole cottage industry of companies and groups that drive around the country with semis full of kind of cool space displays. And they kind of park themselves for a month or so, and we will have a place for them to kind of come, and we'll rotate things. And that's part of our design because we want people to kind of come and see new things and refresh things. Allen Hancock, we're contiguous to them, right next door. We want to give them intern opportunities. They have a hospitality business. We want to be able to take, let's say, half a dozen of their interns or of their students in their hospitality business and let them work at our front desk in our lodge and in our hotel or in our restaurants. So on Vandenberg, Vandenberg's a little bit more, not controversial, but it's a sensitive place for us from a national point of view. So the access is more limited, but nonetheless, we will pursue with them potential tours if the demand warrants and if they are agreeable. So we haven't, we talked to them informally. We haven't agreed anything. We're way, that's way, that's down the road, it's not going to happen anytime soon. We have put that bug in the right ears of the right people, we think. But as you know, the management changes their leadership, the uniform leadership changes all the time. The senior civilians stay, are pretty static. So we want to do that, and we hope that they will support us. They've got a museum, it's actually pretty good, but it's over by the ocean, and I can't remember the slick number, but it's, you know, it's hard to get to. You mean, so, and there's things worth seeing there. But, and I, we've offered the Air Force, Space Force, that, look, you want to bring that onto our facility, we'll give you a place. And if you want to put a recruiter in the corner, we'll let you do that too. So I'm, we're happy to work with the Space Force in every, any which way they think works for them and for us too. We will actually also have a Vandenberg Heritage Center. So a little bit of the history, because there is a lot of history here, and there's also a lot of Chumash history here too. So our creative guys will kind of blend all that in. So we make sure we kind of capture the correct amount of local history, and also we'll have artifacts. One thing is, you know where the flagpoles are? That mesa looks out over, you can see some of the launch facilities from there. We're going to put, the plan is, obviously, if we get approved, the plan is to put water, electric hookups for food trucks. We'll pave some of that, we'll put permanent toilets up there, we'll put a stage, and then you can also rent stages. So we'll use that for concerts and seasonal celebrations. I haven't quite figured out how we're going to deal with, Lompoc is colder than most people. If you're outside designing these things, you don't realize about, after you've lived here, we've got, we'll have to think about how we maybe put in a windbreaks or something. But anyway, we'll work our way through that. We've got, I told the architect, we want to have some expansion slots on the footprint, and there's at least 12 on there. And by the way, I've got extra copies of the site plan, if you want to take one with you. You're welcome to do that. And I've got extra copies of the project summary too, so just see me afterwards. But there's about a dozen different footprints, they're the dashed boxes, where we can put different pieces. You know, we've already approached some space infrastructure companies. So, for instance, there's a discussion I've had back in London about, there's a company that's looking to do roughly 29 TNC telemetry, tracking, and control stations around the world to manage all these satellite constellations that are going up. And the way you do that is either RF, radio frequency, or you do it with optics, lasers. So there's maybe an opportunity there to get someone like that. I've got land. I just need a client, and I'll build the suit, right? That's kind of what the pitch is to those guys. But they have to have an educational component to their offering, which to me is, you know, they have a hallway you can walk down and you can interact with, you know, the controllers and something like that. So we'll figure out how all that works. We'll also go to NASA, Cal Poly, UCSB, Caltech, Silicon Valley, and make those same kind of offers. So we'll kind of try to attract as many space-related companies as we can, and we can fit.
You're running up on your 20 minutes.
Okay, almost done. Well, I'm glad, I think I've got one or two more. So look, we look at Lompoc as the galactic headquarters, so we manage the whole galaxy from right down the street, and it's going to be kind of our creative castle. But there's other opportunities emerging. There's 29 spaceports in North America, and we, the guy that runs that was here and walked the land with me about two months ago. So our guys were in Texas last week, and I'm going to Greece in the new year. I've already been there once. They are looking to do something too, and the government will sponsor projects like ours, plus Virginia and some other places too. So there's other things going on. But this is our kind of home, and it's kind of where we want to, we want to build a business from here. So let me see, let me, how much time do I have?
Five more minutes.
Five more minutes, okay. So this is an important slide. So one of the things is, okay, what is the city's risk and what is the investor's risk? So we think key catalysts for investors are the lease and DDA signing, and then entitlement. I put the risk in kind of three buckets as far as the city goes. So suppose we're unable to gain any traction and raise the capital, and I kind of put that out, I don't want to get too fine, but let's say in 15, 18 months, I'm standing up here and saying, look, we couldn't raise the money. And basically, the land, all we're going to do to that land in the short term is put an office trailer up there, and we need to do some geotech boring to understand kind of what the land underground is. So that's all we're going to do. If I'm up here in 15 months, 18 months, saying we couldn't make it work, then we'll give the land back, and you guys can run, think, and write another story about these guys that, another problem. I hope he's here because I'd actually like to meet the guy because I think we can turn him around, you know. But in any case, the next bucket is during construction and build-out. So that's an ADC loan, that's a construction loan. We'll hire, people aren't going to give you that kind of money without making sure you have an owner's rep and some project management company. I've already got people approaching me to be the project management guys, and these are big companies that want to be attached to a project like this. The last bucket is, after opening, let's say, attendance and the revenue is kind of disappointing, what happens then is we probably, as the owners, equity owners, we go and say, we need to do a debt restructuring, voluntary debt restructuring. We'll give up some of our equity, we need to kind of cut the cost of the debt. If that doesn't work, then, just like your mortgage, you'll get a notice of default, the lenders will then take control. They'll hire someone like Alvarez and Marcel, I used to work for them, Alex Partners, FTI Consulting, these are big companies, this is what they do. The lenders take control, they want to maximize their recovery. So the equity holders like us, $50 million, it gets wiped out. We get a zero. So as you can imagine, that's a disaster for us. That's kind of the last thing we ever want to see happen. But what happens then, I'm going through this so that people understand what happens, the lenders will hire a dedicated team, they'll take over the place. That's someone like Delaware North, SeaWorld, Merlin Entertainment, Six Flags, et cetera. And the property remains open, and they will look at, what was the problem? Do we invest more money? Do we just sell it outright, right away? You know, do we repurpose this into a technology convention center, that kind of thing? So basically, my point is, the risk remains with the investors for the most part, right? Okay, so last slide, because otherwise, I'm sure the mayor's going to kick me, kick me to the curb.
Just being fair to everybody, so.
Okay. Yeah, so the Central Coast has some market peculiarities. We think in the latest cut of numbers, I think slow hotels are still missing. There's like 2,500 hotels, you know, in San Luis Obispo, right? So, and that adds another 21,000 attendees, that moves the 207 number to 228. And that's still, Mr. Dvorak's numbers kind of end at 60 minutes, right? So we think there's a whole nother world out there, you know, beyond 60 minutes. Camp Odyssey, space camp, we're projecting 65,000 attendees. We think that's a solid number. Our length of stay is six to eight hours. We'll adjust the capacity to make sure that we get people to stay longer. They stay in local hotels, and they eat in local restaurants. The risk stays with us. But, you know, these two reports have been valuable, they've been valuable second opinions, they've helped us refine the project, and there's many opportunities to adjust the program as we start, as we continue on. We are a startup company in Lompoc. If you're up in Silicon Valley, you see a lot of them. If you're down in, down in Santa Barbara, LA, you see probably a few. But I bet you, you don't see a whole lot here in Lompoc, but we are one, and we're happy to take your questions now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. All right.
[applause]
So I'll just remind you, it's a public meeting, and there may be some people that aren't in favor of it, and clapping does not encourage the opposition voice. So I would ask that, if you support something, you very silently wave your hands, so it doesn't discourage somebody who may not agree with what appears to be a large number of you. All right. We will now go to public comment. Can I see, given the crowd, can I see a show of hands how many would like to make a comment on this? All right. So that's few enough that we'll keep it at three minutes. If more of you start standing up and it starts to be over an hour, we will drop the timeframe that you have to speak just to be respectful of everyone's time. So you will have three minutes. You may come to the podium, and you don't have to use up the whole three to minutes. And/or you may call in. We have an open phone line for those that weren't able to make the meeting, and the number to call in is 805-875-8201. And it would help if you queued up, got in line, so that it moved quicker, given the hour. So if there are numerous of those that would like to speak, form a line so we can keep it moving and respect the hour and not be here like we were last night till nearly 11 o'clock. All right, floor's yours.
So my question or my comment is about risk, and there's a lot of questions that have been about risk. And it's a little bit odd because there was a lot of gumption that was shown by the city council when, a couple of people on there in particular, when they said they wanted to make Lompoc the cannabis capital of California. That's a controversial idea. And there was at one point, 46, I believe, permits given to cannabis companies, knowing full well that Lompoc can't support that many, that there was going to be business failure. And yet, that risk of business failure did not stop us from doing something unique and different and interesting that put us on the map. So if we're willing to go and have risk when it comes to business failure with the cannabis industry, a controversial industry, why are we not within educational space industry? Why are we letting risk hold us back from that? Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Fred Biddle. Most of you, a lot of you know me. I have family here and colleagues in Rotary, and I'm a lender, so a lot of Realtors here also. I'm a 36-year resident of Lompoc, a 30-year business owner, like I said, Santa Fe Mortgage, father, grandfather, four grandchildren, all live locally. I care a lot. I've invested a lot in this community, and I'd like to see good decisions be made. I think we all can agree that's, you know, a reasonable thing to assert. I'm in favor of the space-based project, and I formally request city council to vote yes tonight to move it forward. In one stage or another, this project has been in proposal for more than three decades. Originally, it started halfway between the entrance to the base and where it would be now. That got poo-pooed. A lot of things happened. It wasn't the city's fault, it was just, you know, the economic times, et cetera. But it's been around a long time, and it finally, folks, has real, real life, real potential. And in my opinion, it would be a real tragedy for the city to allow a repeat of the infamous 2001 Fest Parker deal with Greco debacle that somehow was going to be a really great thing, and something happened, and somebody sat on his or her hands, and it fizzled out, and we lost an opportunity, and something really good happened in Lompoc at that time. I don't want that to happen again. I really don't. Lompoc needs an identity, something other than cannabis, and something other than the wine ghetto, something other than the City of Arts and Flowers, the sign I read when I drive into work in the morning, come down the hill. I'm really proud that we have that moniker. But I haven't seen too many buses of kids coming up here lately, looking to see our flower fields. Because it's just not happening. They're not there. And I, you know, it's economical reason, et cetera. But what's wrong with an identity of a space base for Lompoc to give it something unique for Southern California, for our kids and our grandkids? I think it would be awesome. I really do. Back in 2016, our own US congressman decided that he was going to be funny and call Lompoc the armpit of Santa Barbara County. And I didn't really take kindly to that remark. I thought, you know, joking, okay, but still, unnecessary and unwarranted. And not about you, but I think we deserve better, and we can do better than that. Other parts of Santa Barbara County, they look at Lompoc. I'm in Rotary, I go to a lot of meetings, I'm from Santa Barbara. I talk to a lot of people, north and south. They think Lompoc's a joke, overall. And I don't like that. It pisses me off. It really does. And we can and should do better. And here's an opportunity to do something like that. So this wouldn't just benefit Lompoc, it would benefit the entire Southern California region. And most of all, it would give us a much-needed source of pride, something positive that we can give our kids and our grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for having us. I'm the president of the local Lompoc Valley Association of Realtors. We really do, as Fred said, I couldn't say anything better really than Fred did. We need an identity for the city, having the spaceport here, for, for tourists, to bring more jobs in. They would spend more money here for our local economy, and for the education of the kids. You know, both my kids graduated from high school here, they've both moved on, they're back, you know, one's up in Santa Maria, so kind of local, but we would come down, I live in the village area, so it's, you know, we need something here to go to. We need something to tell people, "Hey, what do you do in Lompoc? What do you have? What should I come there to see?" What are we going to tell them? The weed shop? You know, "We just don't have that." And this would be a perfect opportunity to try and get something going. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. Forgive me for reading this, I wanted not get involved with, you know, the emotions. Fred mentioned Carbajal, he got away with calling Lompoc the armpit of Santa Barbara County, while other areas of the county are thriving on tourism and growth. As the highest representatives of our city, do you take that? Do you take that and act like it's true? Or do you take that and do something to prove them wrong? If our city is given the highest percentage of low-income households in the county, what do we do about it? Most of those households have children that go to our schools. So we should create something in our community to make a difference for our community and for our children. We create job opportunities, we create internship opportunities, we show our children something right here at home that excites them about their options, their future, their contribution to the world. We have a perfect platform with Vandenberg Space Force Base and SpaceX in our backyard. Our community has been given this opportunity, so what are you going to do about it? Science camps, as required by the state, for our fifth and sixth graders typically are mostly wilderness and nature exploration. We fundraise for those, we travel for those. I've chaperoned. They're great, information is great. Was it inspiring and challenging? Was it a model to show our kids opportunities for their future, excite them into math and science? We were able to take our kids to the LA Natural History Museum, the Space Museum. We spent half a day at each of those, spent more than what Space Spaces proposing. And I've heard numerous times from families who have visited the Santa Barbara Mission and spent the day visiting Santa Barbara and the beaches. Or they've seen the Seniñez Mission and got to spend the day in solving. La Prisma Mission already gets over 200,000 visitors a year. How many of those are school field trips and families coming specifically for the purpose of a mission visit? So why don't we make sure that we have more than one reason for visitors to come and stay in Lompoc? I believe that Pale Blue Dot is offering, what they're offering will be a magnet to many parents and educators. They will come from more than 60 minutes away, just like they do to watch SpaceX launches and to come to the mission. Does opportunity come with a risk? Of course it does. Without risk of any kind, we can't expect to have any success, we'll be getting the same result and be in the same rut. No success has ever been achieved by embracing, without embracing uncertainty of what will happen if we do not do something different. So I implore all of you to do something different, believe in our community and our future enough to give this project the push forward and support that we expect of our community leaders. Thank you.
My first experience with STEM education came in high school, specifically Lompoc High's Stars Program. We would build model rockets and launch them out by the baseball field. One of the first ones that I built, it disappeared, and then reappeared on Facebook Marketplace one day, someone was selling it as a lawn dart. Yeah, it was crazy. I got certified in SolidWorks my junior year. But the classrooms where I was learning math, and history, and English in, had ceiling tiles that were falling off the roof there. Lights wouldn't get replaced sometimes for weeks at a time. And so when I see a project coming in here, that promises to give students the environment to learn STEM in which they deserve, for a $58 admission fee, I can't help but feel this, this sense of profound sadness and, and regret, that apparently, this is, this is what we need to do to get this community behind STEM education. Like, all of the opportunities that Pale Blue Dot wants to take advantage of to make money have been here, the whole time, y'all. We didn't need them to come in and take advantage of them for us. We didn't. We could have done it ourselves. But, like, I don't know, guys, I don't know who this is going to be accessible for. It's like, they, they talk about how there are going to be free admission days, but for-profit theme park and entertainment industries are incentivized to have those free admission days on days when people aren't likely to come, like in the middle of the week, or when school is in session. And there are just so many barriers that having this be a for-profit venture put in the way for a lot, especially a lot of lower-income people who might depend on a STEM education to, to improve their livelihoods and to build generational wealth. So when I think of the people in this community who most need help, who, and who most need a reliable access to STEM education, I don't think that this thing can give them that. So, look, if, if this thing works, it works. I'm just a little tired of people saying that we need the city to have an identity, and then we don't talk about what we want that identity to be until someone else comes and gives us an identity for us, and that identity is for the purpose of serving people who aren't from this community, and who, and who aren't, and people from this community aren't going to benefit from that identity and that vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish I had something prepared. My name's Mary Lee Velasco. I've been here since 1969, everyone. I left for 10 years to go to college. I remained a registered voter here because it was important to me, I knew I was coming back to this community. When I hear them talking about other people coming in, I don't know, what are we offering our students right now? Arts and flowers? We have a dispensary and liquor store on almost every corner. Are we trying to educate our kids on how to roll a better joint? Or are we going to inspire them as these rockets are going off all around us? They've renamed our base, Rocket Town Comic-Con comes to town now. We've got Rocket Town Honda, we've got Rocket, people are embracing it. Why are we letting it slip through our fingers? And this is what I've been saying all over the place. Are we arts and flowers, or are we the town of missed opportunities? Because that's how I'm seeing it. We keep letting opportunities slip through our fingers. And to me, if you're not going to balance all these dispensaries and liquor stores and wineries, balance it with education, with STEM, with activities. When these rockets are going off, you think my street isn't lined with people that are watching it? You think at 2:00 in the morning, 2:30, two weeks ago, my kids and I didn't slip out to the patio to see it? People still look, they come here. And I'm going to pretty much wrap it up with this. My husband said, "When it comes to kids, people will find the money. They always do." I know somebody that works for a company near us, sent her kids, spent $400 to send her kid 30 minutes up the road for three days to an outdoor camp. People will do it. If it's there for their kids, and it can inspire their kids, I beg to differ, people will do and come. But clearly, we haven't done it on our own, so we do need someone to come in and do it. And I'd also like to remind everyone that there are a hell of a lot of nonprofits that are profitable. So why are we villainizing people that are for profit? That's the wrong way to look at it. Thank you.
I just want to say, I don't have much more to say than what the preceding people said already. I wholeheartedly agree with them. I think this is a huge opportunity for the city of Lompoc to do something that is good for them, good for the people, good for the businesses. I think overall, it's an exciting thing. We are here at Vandenberg Space Force Base, that's what we're known for. People are excited, I've got friends all over the place that are excited for us because of the rocket launches. And they have traveled an hour and a half to get here, just to watch it, rather than seeing my videos. They wanted to experience it. They stayed, we had lunch, and we went around in business, and they said, "When is the next one?" I said, "I will let you know." I think it's a huge opportunity, the door is opening, let's take it. Thank you.
Hi, I moved here in February with my fiance, and we produced Rocket Town Comic-Con. And we kind of showed Lompoc that people will come if you provide it. We had people from Phoenix, Arizona, Las Vegas, San Diego, as far north as Napa, all come to our tiny little town to come to a Comic-Con, where we only anticipated 500 people per day, and we had over 4,800 people in attendance. And they didn't stay for just one or two hours, they stayed the entire day and came the next day. When I saw that they were projecting one to three hours at the space base, I thought that was ridiculous, because we go to Cabrillo Aquarium, and we are there for one to three hours. And everyone knows how small that is, but we look forward to that every single time. My niece is a senior in high school, and she participates in that program. I am now a teacher's aide here, which I absolutely love, and I see the kids starving for something to grasp onto. I mentioned it before, I came from Livermore, where Lawrence Livermore National Lab actually started the program in Livermore High School that was all STEM-based. Their English was technical-based, their mathematics was all, all technical, all into the fields of being able to work at the lab. Sandia Lab, Lawrence National Livermore, wait, sorry, I always get that mixed up. But it was an amazing thing that my two older kids got to go to and experience. And my younger daughter, who now goes to school here, there's no STEM programs available to her at the school that she goes to. And that really is upsetting to me. Someone mentioned that it's all for profit, everything's for profit. San Diego Comic-Con is a 501(c)(3)E, and they are for profit. They make about $5 million or more a year. And just saying that it's not going to educate our children, it's going to educate our children. The, the field trips are not going to be coming out of people like me's pocket, where I can't afford it. Because I, in all honesty, I am below low-income here. Like, I struggle every day to pay bills and rent, and I work 40 hours a week, and I do other jobs, just to try and make ends meet for my family. But this is something that I would save my money for, to bring my daughter there, to, because she has loved space and NASA, and every rocket launch that we have, she's outside, waking us up at 2:00, "Can we go watch the rocket?" We had the opportunity to get base access, and the first thing that she wanted to do was go see the launch pad. She wanted to go to the museum. She's 12 years old, and there's no other STEM programs for her right now. And I, I fully support this program, and I would love to see this for all of our kids. Thank you.
Waving hands is childish. Real quick, everybody's hit everything else. We want to retain our first responders. This is a lot of tax money, not just on that property. I have a Facebook page with 40,000 people specifically for rocket launches. There's several people in here on the page. All the time, we get asked, "Where's the best place to watch a launch?" I tell people from home. One, it's foggy here, and what's there to see? Everybody's already talked about it. This is a chance to bring more people up here, more dollars up here, like I said, not on the property. Hotels, food, food, everywhere within the city and county can benefit from this. Build it, and they will come. Not to be cheesy.
I see a lot of friends and family here. My name is Philip Segura. I've worked here and lived here since 1960. And I love Lompoc. I truly, truly love Lompoc. And everybody up here, I'm sure, loves Lompoc the same way I do. We need to show who Lompoc is, and Fred said it right. Who are we? Who do we want to be? We, this is it, this is our golden egg. This space will bring us on the map, this will show us who we really, really are. We, we have a choice, and I've seen all the hands wave, and that's great. We're asking you upfront to be our leaders, and to show us what path to take. We need your help. We don't want clapping. We want this to be our home, and this is for our family, this is for our children. Please bring it to us. We, please, that's all we ask. Thank you.
Well, you've heard tonight, a lot of people, why they want this project, but you're not here tonight to look at somebody wants it or doesn't want it. What's your responsibility and your job is to look at, is this feasible for this community? Is this financially feasible? You know, I heard that the, that you might possibly be selling the property for $500,000 to Pale Blue Dot. $500,000 for 82 acres? Wow. You can't probably buy a house in Lompoc for that. That sort of sounds like a gift of public land, and I would be very careful on that. The deed to the property says that you can have open space, recreation, and education. It's not a commercial venture. It's an educational venture. It's an open-space venture, and it's an educational venture. Steve, when he talked, said, I don't know how many times I started counting, and then I forgot, "We think, we think, we think." To spend this kind of money in this responsibility to a project where they think it might work, they think it's a good idea, they think people will come, they think it'll make money, wow. I would be very careful. You know, 100 launches that SpaceX is supposed to do, if you believe what SpaceX and Elon Musk is doing. Some of you may remember back, the last time that the Space Center was going to bring money to Lompoc, it was going to bring education to Lompoc, and then it went belly-up. It didn't happen. So, I mean, we think it won't happen, but we don't know. Steve also mentioned, which is a whole new world here, about that one area out at the Y, and how that there might be concerts. And I, what flashed in my mind was litigation from the homeowners that live there, who didn't invest to be able to be next door to a concert center. And then the last thing is, there hasn't been an environmental impact report done on this property, and this, this project. We don't know what the cost is, you don't know what the cost is. I mean, I just look at traffic alone, the whole transit system out there, water, air, it's not just your game, the state will have a hand in it, the county will have a hand in it, everybody's going to be looking at this. It's almost like we've got this wonderful project, but we don't know anything. We don't really know what the costs are going to be. I would encourage you to look at that first. Thank you. Thank you.
That's going to be a tough one to follow. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you being here. Last night was long, and clearly, there's a lot of support both sides. From a page I like to follow, "Friday morning launch was fantastic. Our first trip up to watch one in person, as well as worth the drive. Here are the photos I got. Also, did you know McDonald's in Lompoc is sort of space-themed? It had one of the players my son loved. Haven't seen one of those in ages." SpaceX getting ready to launch up to 100. I think they're going to need a designated viewing spots. "Celebrated a day launch last Friday with Korean and Irish enthusiasts. The crowds are as much fun to see at the rockets." "I'm in Guadalupe, my mom is visiting from Southern California. When's the next launch, and where do we go?" When's the next launch and where do we go? Can anybody confirm when the next launch is to see? Launch from Vandenberg, had to go out to Harris Grade. We watched the Korea 425 launch today. Nice shot from Vandenberg visiting. Gets down, it keeps going, it keeps going. And then this is a nice one that kind of just emphasizes what I, I think a good amount of people are highlighting here. Welp, I tried but didn't see a thing here in San Fernando Valley. The reality is that people want to see this. Now, you and I, Jeremy, we were in the room at the initial meeting of this and I think you were wholeheartedly like head steam ahead and I was like, whoa, no, you know? But as the plans fleshed out, I came back around and you, you made a big campaign on, if I can just get 1% off of that 101, just 1%, I'm going to change Lompoc for the better. So I get where you come from and where you're going in the path. I just don't get the hurdles that you have across some of the diocese there. This is a fair opportunity to ask questions, to do your due diligence, but to take advantage of opportunity because we are so seldomly afforded this level of opportunity unless it's in the guise of government or base or something even like windmills which have no intrinsic value to the community, to the culture, to the small business, to the hotels, to the stays. So, as you look at this, let's consider if there's major risk at each of those points that we can't protect ourselves from, as you've done, and move forward and take advantage of this glorious opportunity.
As the next speaker comes up, did I hear that we have a caller? Are they still on? Okay, we'll go to the caller after this.
Great, thank you so much. Since I'm here in person, I feel sort of entitled to speak to you guys. The, the beautiful thing about this project is it's well-funded. There's, I think there's PTSD related to this whole theme, right? Because of all the failures? And, oh, excuse me. I think there's PTSD related to the failures in the past, but we're going forward. Steve's got a great team. Okay, Steve's got a great team. It, it's a well-thought-out project, completely full with all kinds of benefits to the, to the city and to the region. To the gentleman, to the young gentleman that came up and complained about access for students, there is a nonprofit part of this. I'm sure that Steve and the team will find a way to accommodate those kind of students that need or want to be part of it. But I, I think the essential part of this that's critical is there's really no risk to the city and to the citizens of Lompoc by approving this. The risk lies entirely with Pale Blue Dot. If they don't get the financing, they're going to walk away. If it turns out that the project in some way has to stop or is waylaid, that won't happen because they're going to create milestones. If they don't meet the milestones, it's not going to go forward. And I can even envision in the event that it failed completely in the sense that it, it didn't work. I don't know if you guys realize this, but UCSB came up here previously to explore having a satellite campus here. And I don't know about you, but I'm from Pasadena, the home of Caltech and JPL. Gets to be about 110 degrees there during the summer. And I can imagine Caltech professors and Caltech actually establishing a satellite campus here if that came to pass because Caltech has no problem with money and neither does JPL. So, the, the benefits of this project are unknown. It's going to be, it's going to morph into something greater. I can see professors coming up here, I can see classes. And I think the benefit, we've, we've gone through it in terms of STEM. Debbie did a good job of, of telling us all about what's lacking. This is, the project is to inspire, entertain, right, and educate. And that's what it's going to do. So, I would hope that the City Council will go ahead and, and extend the MOU and move to the next phase for the citizens themselves, knowing that we cannot lose. The city can't lose the, the idea of failure. There, there really is no such thing because it's going to be mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the caller online and then go back to in-room because the caller's been on for a while.
Thank you. Yes, this is Sherri Foster. I've been a local president for over 20 years. I just wanted to leave some comments and I'm very concerned about the education that they plan to implement with this Pale Blue Dot project. That I disagree that, that, um, that the, the contract that they plan to attend with Lompoc Unified and having Common Core as their education base is totally invalid. It will not work. If you look at the lawsuits that the school, school district has paid out against claims for kids with special needs, the, the, the Common Core does not work with disabilities at all. We need to have a different plan in place for education, especially since that report came out from Kevin Kylie speaking on the floor earlier this week. California is in last place when it comes to test scores in education out of all 50 states. This is a serious problem. We need to think about our children first and we also need to think about the, the traffic and the impact and the feasibility of, of what this facility is going to be able to really accommodate on such a small acreage piece for what they want to do. And I think that we need to set up a, a citizens committee as soon as possible, for at least 90 days and give the people more time to really think this out so we can get a good, solid plan in place for the education of the children other than Common Core. Thank you. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back to in-room until we hear the phone ring again. So if you were going to speak in-room, come on up.
Nick Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. You know, one of the previous speakers talked about litigation. And interestingly enough, I find it very difficult to accept that one of the city's representatives is on the board, which has sued the city several times for environmental issues. Let's all be very honest about this. Several of you have taken large donations from special interests who are on boards, who are against this project. You've heard the overwhelming voices of the community. They've made it very clear. Do not sell us out to special interest anymore, please. It's time that we start showing how all this operates and how this works. I'm at a whole different level of, of, of message here. But it's time that we start rooting out special interests from the city and start doing what's in the best interest of the residents. Okay? This is not a special interest, this is just a private party trying to bring a viable project. I know everybody has a difference of opinion. But it's time that government stops getting in the way because of commitments that were made to get to the positions that you're in. With time, we will review and, and look at that and, and bring that forward and make challenges, some may be legal challenges to how this is operating. Because, you know, to me, it stinks a little. But let's get back on focus. It's within your power to do what is right and to erase all the past and to do what the community wants and not what a handful of special interests are asking you to do. So please do so. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please queue up, thank you.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff members of the public. My name is Frances Romero. I do work for the Pale Blue Dot project, but I'm also a former mayor of the city of Guadalupe. So I do understand the demographics of your community. I am a Lompoc Leadership Graduate and I spent an entire year here getting to know this place and I have been here consistently throughout that time, have a lot of relationships. I want to say that I, my father worked for Jet Propulsion Laboratory. I grew up with the promise of space. I brought a couple of things that are important to me that are artifacts from my childhood. I'm one of the few girls, I was the only girl, that was getting As in math, in science, in my school in Barstow. Barstow is also a fairly disadvantaged community as well. We've heard a lot of things tonight and the thing that my company has been hired to do is to deal with the environmental review and to manage getting the information to the city that they need to be able to do that. That's a step in the process. It's premature to do that step right now. That step is a public process and everybody will have plenty of time to comment on a document that will fully expose and share anything and everything that has to do with the site. And we've heard a lot about risk today. You take risk when you get up in the morning. You take risk when you get in your car every day. Life is risk. But as a former elected official of a community that has a very good nonprofit that I used to be the executive director of, the Dunes Center always struggles for financing. We have more nonprofits in Santa Barbara County than any county in the state. And everybody's competing for the same dollars. And it's not to say that their, their, their goals are not worthy, but it's a hard thing to deliver education. But in Guadalupe, you can ask the kids in any of our classes, how many of you have been to the beach? The beach is four miles away? 50% of those kids have not been. So bringing programs to a community and making them accessible is so important. And I don't think, I think everybody here gets that for the most part. I wrote this before I ever got here tonight. I hope that you vote to extend the discussions, City Council, so that you protect this opportunity for your community and for this scholastic achievement that will occur as a result of having a world-class resource in their backyard. This project will be the catalyst to positively impact Lompoc, this region and the state. Again, I want to hold something up. This is a photo, 1968 December, from Goldstone, where my dad worked. This is what we used to get in my generation to show what space was about. We're going well beyond that with this project and thank you tonight. I hope you'll support it.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Daniel Smith. I'm a longtime resident. I was, I've been here since I was two-years-old and my father was stationed here on Vandenberg Air Force Base. At the beginning of his career, he worked on the Titan II missile program. I grew up in Lompoc, like I said just a moment ago. And ever since I was a child, I would make my best effort to see every one of these rocket launches. I still do, even in the middle of the day, even if I can't go out and actually physically see it, it's still something that I truly enjoy. I think that this project is going to bring a lot of potential to the city, not only just for revenue and ways to put money towards the city to improve the problems that we have other than the, the poverty level here. I see it as a way to get kids busy. Instead of having them sit on the phones, be on video games or get involved with drugs and the street gangs, this is a great opportunity for them to be putting their energy towards something that is more positive. There are those that are afraid of this risk, but as a business owner, you know that there's, if there's no risk, there's no glory. And I think that this is a very positive thing for our community and I hope that it does get approved. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity of being able to speak. My name is Angelina Dedimani and I come from a multi-generational family from Lompoc. I'm here tonight to speak out on the Blue Dot project. Although I think that it's a great opportunity for our community in many ways, I think that this council really needs to pump the brakes. I think that every single one of these council members up here needs to do diligence, do their homework, reach out and get more community support involvement, and also really look at this project for face value. Because a lot of the times, often, our council members in the past, over the many decades and our leaders rely on staff, rely on a lot of staff reports, which sometimes could be potentially misleading depending on the desired outcome. And I'd like to also point out that council member, excuse me, Mayor Osborne has failed to return any phone calls. And I find it quite interesting and even emails. I wanted to meet with Mayor Osborne in regards to this project because there are some very critical key components that would help the city of Lompoc, not only with jobs, but for education. And this project isn't one that's meant just to reach out to select groups. Just like the other day at the wonderful Lompoc Unified School District meeting, I noticed our new superintendent made a public comment openly at the meeting saying how she has met with a Lompoc City Council member or potentially mayor. We don't know if it's a council member, Mr. Jeremy Ball, or if it was Ms. Osborne or Ms. Cordova. But we also know that she met with a district supervisor, which low and behold, when people do their homework, we can find out really who people have met with. I think if people really care about this community, they're going to meet with everybody. They're going to get input from everybody. As children are truly our future and they're used too many times in an inappropriate way. So again, Mayor Osborne, as an elected official, I would expect that you would do diligence and you would return phone calls and emails and not just placate to special interest groups who will help your political career in your bid for supervisor. You haven't done anything for Lompoc, you failed miserably. Moreover, you can't just move to a town and jump into a political position and rely on Ms. Howerton to get you elected as a district supervisor. Our county deserves more, our city of Lompoc deserves far greater and far more. And most importantly, you have several people tonight who wanted to speak at public comment who are watching online and your IT is failing. You're not allowing the community to participate fully. I had to drive here in between meetings because I was on hold and disconnected several times in fear of not being able to make a public comment. You have no ADA accommodations for people with disabilities. You have no policy for a city council meeting for anybody with a disability to present and be able to participate with public comment, whether it be in-person or whether, whether it be online. All that I'm saying is I encourage, and right now, this is a three-minute, people with disabilities under the American with a Disabilities Act who are ADA-accommodated also have to be accommodated just as people in high school who have IEPs. It's not my fault or my problem to tell you, Mayor Osborne, how to run the show. So I hope that you start to do diligence, put the city of Lompoc first. And Ms. Cordova, you as well have participated in things where you, special interest-
I would appreciate if you would respect the rest of the room has used their free-
I'm accommodated under the American Disabilities Act. And if you don't know that, then you can be personally liable too and I'll add you to the list. So I implore you to engage with council and learn about Title 42. Title 42 is one, sir, that's supposed to be accommodated by all. It's a federal mandate, which I, I am not supposed to address the comments to the public. Thank you, Mr. Ball.
I'm sorry, I, 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 I'm sorry.
Excuse me, the public is speaking and you guys should be respectful.
Mayor- We're trying to be. Mr. Malave, as our attorney, would you please?
Maybe your attorney can opine on Title 42.
We, 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 I'd suggest we might want to take a recess, Mayor. I think we need a recess anyway.
All right, so, thank you for expressing your personal opinion. I would like to continue public comment. If you would like to respect each other's time and stick to the three minutes, that would be helpful. If you don't, we will have to cut your mic because this is designed, it's part of our protocol. There are ADA protocols in place. If you notify us that you need the ADA assistance or the translation, we will provide it. It is part of our handbook, it does exist. We set the time in order to be respectful of the number of people here and wanting to hear from all of you. And we are here to listen to you equally. So I will reopen the floor for a public comment. And for those of you that would like to speak, you are still welcome to come forward and have three minutes. The floor is still open for that. The phone lines are open. We have not heard from our radio, our television, our computer people as to any breakdown in it. If we hear it, we make announcements, but the first and- If you would like to make a public comment, please come forward or call in at 805-875-8201.
Many of us have fond memories of Ken Adam Park from over the years. Wonderful botanical garden, family get-togethers, scouting outings, and more. More recently, there've been dry camping opportunities. Tonight is not a night for decisions. We are here to listen to what information is currently available about Pale Blue Dot's Lompoc Space Base. Questions about the project's financial feasibility are what have been at the forefront of recent discussions. These are good questions, because we would expect that Pale Blue Dot's conceptual plan would be more rosy than not. The city has brought in two different consultants with project-related expertise. The latest analysis of Pale Blue Dot's conceptual plan by Pro forma advisors concluded that Pale Blue Dot underestimated cost, overestimated revenue, but would still be profitable, just not as profitable as proposed. What I understand is the concern of some council members is that Pale Blue Dot Ventures will buy the property and fail. What I understand Pro forma advisors is telling us is that if we were investors, we might have concerns about return on investment. As to the question of whether the project will fail or continue, Pro forma says it will continue because it will generate income. A good number of our city parks have been recipients of current federal infrastructure funding. Ken Adam Park has not been a major recipient. In general, there's been a wind down in its use and condition. Like so many of our recreational facilities, there is no revenue stream to maintain it, nor are there adequate revenue streams to be found in suggestions made for this park's use. Recently, a local opinion writer told us about better options for the use of Ken Adam Park. They were to make it a regional sports facility, or to reinvigorate the botanical garden, or partner with Alan Hancock's firefighting academy to use it as a practice wildland fire site. None of these possibilities generate a sustaining stream of revenue for park maintenance. Pale Blue Dot Ventures has brought Lompoc a conceptual project plan that could be a good opportunity for this community, and it fits the donor's use requirements placed on the gift to the city. The city attorney is working to include protections within the disposition and development agreement to have the property returned to the city if the project were to fail. I urge the council to continue working with Pale Blue Dot Ventures to bring Lompoc Space Base to Ken Adam Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm the Don't Sell the Cow woman. So hello, my name is Leah from Lompoc, and I was at home watching this super-long meeting. And the one thing that, listening to everybody coming up and speak, I realized is that our schools must totally suck. That kids have to spend, like, once a year going to a place to be inspired, to learn? We should have, like, STEM in our schools. Like, why do we have to have our kids go somewhere else other than their own classroom? Wouldn't that make Lompoc great? So how about, this is all great, and this is probably all going forward, but let's spend some money on our schools. Let's make each classroom a Space Force Base. Let's have a Space Force Base at each of our schools. Right? So the next time that there's a vote that comes up for a school bond, or somehow to pay teachers more who are overworked and underpaid, like, let's vote for that. So everybody who's here tonight, remember that. When you get your ballot in the mail, and if there's something that'll help our kids, damn it, vote for it.
Seeing no one else rise and no one calling in, we will close public comment. All right. We will bring it back to council. So council has received all the documents, as all of you have, and we have heard from both our most recent consultant and the proposed Pale Blue Dot project, Mr. Frank. So now we'll turn it back to council. Are there any questions you would like to ask tonight? And if so, please, when you ask your question, if it's directed at the consultant, please note that, so we know who to have respond, if it's to city staff or the city attorney, or it's something you'd like Mr. Frank to answer, so that we know who's the appropriate person to come to the microphone. If it's staff, and you have a microphone, you can turn it on from where you are. Mr. Frank, if it's to you, please remember to return to the podium so we can catch the recording for the answer. All right. Councilmember Vega.
My question's for our city attorney. Maybe, Jeff, if you wouldn't mind, maybe give an explanation of what MOU means for the public that might not understand, that the memorandum of understanding is a contract between the city and Pale Blue Dot?
That's right, Councilmember Vega. The MOU is the memorandum of understanding. We, that's a contract between the city and Pale Blue Dot, the proposed developer. We entered into that in 2019. There've been a number of extensions for multiple reasons, most, most prominent of which was COVID. But what that agreement says is, the city and Pale Blue Dot are negotiating over whether we're going to enter into basically a purchase and sale agreement to eventually sell this project, this property, to Pale Blue Dot if they get their land use entitlements approved by the city, if they're able to raise enough money to show us that they have enough money to actually build the project, and that we will exclusively negotiate with Pale Blue Dot while that MOU is in effect, and hold the property off the market, and not consider any other developers or developments for that property while the MOU is in effect.
Thank you, sir. And also, the, there was a mention of the city time spent on this project. Maybe you could explain who's been paying for the city's time for this project?
Part of that MOU is an agreement by Pale Blue Dot to reimburse the city for all of the city's staff time, all the city attorney time, all of the city consultant time, that the city is expending and negotiating the, basically, the purchase and sale or DDA agreement.
Are they currently in good standing right now with the city, as far as the payments are?
The deposit is, is, there is a slight negative balance in the deposit, but we're in the process of asking for additional deposit funds.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So I might save us some time. There's a bunch of detailed questions I'm sure that we can go through. I encourage everyone in this room to, as we've been challenged to do our due diligence, we, this is one topic, we get faced with this, so we have to go through it, and we have to study, we have to ask questions, we have to learn. It is our job to do that. So yes, we are doing our due diligence. But instead of asking very specific questions, details, is this, what, what number is this? Is it up or down? It really comes down to something very simple for me. And I'll just, I'll, I'll throw it out there. Everyone's had a story, everyone has a connection to Lompoc, everyone has a history here, and they have a hope. My dad joined the Air Force in 1969, moved to Vandenberg Air Force Base, that's where he was stationed. His goal was to go to Vietnam. It didn't work out. He really wanted to go because he had a rough childhood and didn't care if he didn't make it. He got ulcerative colitis and was stuck on Vandenberg, and they turned him from a soldier into a librarian. After my dad got out of the Air Force, he stayed on Vandenberg for 37 years as a civilian engineer. He was a carpenter. He helped build Slick Six. He didn't know anything about math and science, other than angles and putting nails in wood and using glue. But my dad still has a picture of the space shuttle on top of a Boeing 747 flying over the coastline of Vandenberg. Since I was a little kid, that was always something exciting. Of course, missile launches, that's amazing, that's just incredible. My wife still gets annoyed, she thinks Elon should pay for the right to make noise at Lompoc, but that's a separate subject. When this project was in its last iteration, I thought it was crazy. I didn't like the, some of the, it just seemed, it didn't, it didn't line up. I thought some of the personalities were taking it in different directions, and it just wasn't necessarily making sense. So when this iteration of the project came around, I was very excited, very interested, some serious players, some big brands, some good logos. I was invited to participate and use my imagination to contribute to a wide-ranging conversation about what might happen in Lompoc in regards to some sort of space center. I participated, I contributed lots of ideas, I was very excited. From that point to this point, my job has been to be hesitant, and to do my due diligence, and to ask hard questions, and to wait until we have some professional answers, because, trust me, none of us up here get paid enough to go as deep as is necessary to make sure that we're protecting the interests of the city. There's a lot of details here. So as I've been hesitant about how to, to face this, or to look at this project, how to take myself out of it a little bit, it has come down to one question for me. Can this fail? And if it can, what happens when it fails? And what would that look like? So I asked some questions about that. I wanted to know, what is the risk? That's our job, to decide some of the risk here. But as I got this, even the first, first version of the consultant's report, and I appreciate the level of detail and imagery, and again, you've done a massive amount of work for many different brands, many different projects that are, you know, incredibly wide-ranging. You had some, many serious questions about how aggressive some of the projections might be, and I think all of those are very legitimate concerns. Then I got down to the one little part there that said, in the current form, even though there was many questions about the projections, or could it make this much money? Will it do this? Are you sure it could do that? Even with all of those questions, the report that came back to the city council said that it could work. It didn't say it could be profitable, or it would be massively profitable. It said there could be risk to investors. But it said, as far as the city is concerned, there's minimal risk. So if you want to know where I'm at on this project, I'm excited about it. Been excited about it for a long time. I've had people on both sides of political leanings tell me what to do, and how to think, and what I should feel, and why we should do this for this reason, or why a future generation deserves this. And I've heard it from both sides. And I've had people, and we see it tonight, people get angry, assuming that we can't think up here, that we can't figure out something that's healthy for Lompoc. I'll tell you from my perspective, I don't know if this is going to work. The onus is on the project. They're the ones that have to figure out how to convince somebody with a bunch of money to potentially lose it all. That's not the risk the city's taking. So from my position here, the way I'm looking at, at this issue, we as a council should decide, is it feasible? The report says that it's feasible. Unless somebody wants to push back on that, it says it's feasible, but they doubt that in this current form, it's as profitable as they say it could be. That means there's more work to do. But from my perspective, I'd love to see this happen. I know there's going to be a lot of challenges, but our community's been dying slowly for a long time. Arts and flowers, the art, it's slowly coming back because there's some investment, the flowers are going away, what used to define us no longer defines us. It's the negative things, it's the things that make us feel bad and embarrassed to say, look, I'm from Lompoc sometimes. What do we have to do to get past that? I am hesitant, I want to put as much pressure as possible on those that have the ability potentially to raise funds to make this happen. There's a legacy opportunity here, not only for the people putting this project forward, but for this community. But if it fails, or it doesn't work, it will be the second most devastating thing to this community, aside from the Challenger exploding. So let that sink in. There's a lot to think about. There's a lot to decide. There's a lot of risk here, but from my perspective, the risk is on the investor. This community is yearning for this. They desperately want it. My dad, who barely knew how to put nails and glue and wood together, might get to see my son, his grandson, stand up there and watch a rocket go off and imagine what he could be. That's the way my brain works. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to thank all of you that came out here tonight. This is kind of what I signed up for years ago, when we went through all these hardships. You know, people who were, that were older were here all the time at council meetings, and then all the younger demographics, you know, they got bored and left. And I don't blame it, but I see you guys again, and this is the reason I signed up. Everybody was wondering, hey, Councilman Vega's still there. I was one of the most unlikely candidates to still be here today, as you guys know, right? Come on. So I'm the guy in the corner that, you know, has a couple of remarks here and there, because in reality, I grew up here. There's nothing to do for kids. I don't care how you sell it. You know, we need to have something for the families. I do believe that if you put your kids first, they will show up and you'll pay. Look at the people that signed up for soccer and baseball and everything. Back in the day, I remember my mom having to go to work on a second job just so I could have cleats to go to football and things like that, you know what I mean? And the other kids, how about yearbooks, the end of the school year? People are talking about, hey, some of you are rich, some of you have money. But I'll tell you, most of the people that are elderly now with fixed income, through all the hardships, through COVID and everything, through the increases, the expenses, the fee increases, I'll bet you're just like normal people now. Maybe you were well-to-do once upon a time. But some of the people that retired 10, 15, 20 years ago, do you think that same money still keeps them wealthy? They were here and still in Lompoc? You know, I think most of the fees, every, the cost of living, has taken everything away from us, so basically, while we have his hopes and dreams, and then we have a few naysayers that have built this community the way it is, to where we're disadvantaged. We don't have enough money, they say we can't afford this. Try and buy a suit in this town. Can you buy one? I don't know. Some of the amenities we've had are mostly, you know, they're, they're for lower income, and I get it. But some of the advantages that we have, and we can change things, is because, one of the interactions that I was, that I've had when I was a kid, you only met a police officer when you got in trouble. You only met an attorney now when you get older, when you need some help. You only met a rotarian if you wanted to join their club. These guys are here. These people are here. The kids, they'd love to meet all these people, they'd love to have another opportunity to come and meet some of these people. Well, they're young, so they, we can inspire them to be up here, do something different, learn, you know, not just having to take a job that, you know, back in the day, I used to knock on a door and get a job. Can't do that anymore. You have to have degrees, you got to go online, you got to beg somebody, or you got to know somebody, or you have to have an extreme level of education. Basically, what's happened here in this world. All the people that are doing the hands-on are very limited. Try and go get your, your car worked on, and get the body shop, and get a paint job on your car. Who's teaching these classes? Okay? Who's teaching someone to work on your car without getting someone to extend themselves and allow you to get that training? You're going to sweep floors until you kiss up to somebody, or somebody likes you enough to allow you an opportunity if you don't have those, that four-year degree, the trade school aspect of it. And I'm just talking about all the things that can happen, because if you raise their self-esteem, basically what we've done is we've been sequestered to where we don't feel like we're good enough. People that are here come here for the base, they bring their money here. I'll tell you what, if you, has anybody gone and looked at the rental market here in this Lompoc? You spend $3,000 on a house, $2,500, $4,000 on a rental. You can go anyplace else and spend the same money and rent a house, but in Lompoc, they're charging the same money. Why? Because we have subsidized rents, which makes it harder on people that are actually working, and it's not a crime, it's actually a benefit. People that have this kind of stuff have won the Lotto. It's good for families, and it helps them, but it doesn't allow us to get the amenities that we need, and to get the fun and the, and the hope and the dreams back in Lompoc. What do we do? What do we do? They say you have to leave Lompoc to appreciate it and come back. But you know what? Some people here, when they go on vacation and they come to Lompoc for a week, I'm not sure what they're going to do. So we need to change that. Thank you for being here. I appreciate the support. This is the reason I was up here, to see people come over here and give me their input so that I can help them get what they want. It wasn't supposed to be like on the political world where the larger government does what they want, because once you vote them in, you don't listen to them anymore. Okay? So basically, what we need to do is make, remember that we are your representative. We were elected, we weren't hired. But it's easier to say yes to people running the show than to say no, because they won't like you as much. So thanks again. Appreciate your support.
Councilmember Cordova.
I think that some of the conversations that we keep having are really premature, and they're not in this phase of the project. And, you know, it's, it's disappointing for me because what we should be focusing on is not what we're focusing on, because we keep being given the, the wish, the dream, the visuals, but we're not focusing on truly what this project is at this function. Whether it is feasible or not, I understand, and I truly believe that, and I know this from experience, when financial institutions look to loan money, multi-million dollars for a development project of this size, they're not going to, they're, they rely and they require evaluations, appraisals, and feasibility studies. And I'm going to tell you right now, I haven't encountered one bank that is willing to loan $90 million or $60 million or anything in that nature for a feasibility study that says it could work. They do want more of an assurance. They need to know that this has been vetted by the developer. So the fact that we keep trying to ignore the fact that, and I don't know what Councilmember Ball is looking at, because I'm not seeing the feasibility here. The first consultant said this is not feasible. We went to a second consultant that specialized in theme parks, space theme parks. The gentleman is in the room. I didn't hear him say this is feasible. What I heard him say is, if given changes, there's going to be less profitability, but it could work. You're right, it could work. And, and I hope that if you decide to give away your land, that it does work. I hope that. But stop circulating emails and stop circulating trash and hatred on social media that says that, that, that we are holding you back. You will get to vote, you will get to be heard, just like as you're being heard today. But it is our job. Some of you think that I've been against this project all along. Think what you want, that's okay. We're all here and entitled to our own opinion. But I will tell you this as well. A lot of you voted for me because of my business experience, because of my experience in dealing with budgets, dealing with development, and the oversight, management, and creation of these. So when I'm looking at this, I'm doing it wholeheartedly. I'm doing my due diligence on behalf of the majority, not a select few. And what I really don't appreciate is people coming up here and saying, you know, there is no risk to the people of Lompoc. City Attorney, I'm going to queue you up right now, because I want to hear what the risk is. You explained it to us in the last meeting. I'd like for you to explain it again. But before I'm done, you know, you're going to give away your land. And I've heard stifled, you know, I myself think that Lompoc is a stifled community for a lot of reasons. We can't seem to grow. But I'm going to tell you something. This is what really irks me, is that some people in Lompoc do grow, and those cats get fatter and fatter. And you know what? Some of you in this room, you've probably handed a $10,000 check to Pale Blue Dot already, and that's maybe why you're here. I don't know, because you want to make sure that that $10,000 doesn't go bad. So a select few of you of this community will cash that lottery check the minute that this project goes through and the minute that you're, that, that Pale Blue Dot is able to flip this and sell this, if that's the case. Okay? But don't come here and say that you're being held back. This is, this is the opportunity for everybody to speak. So City Attorney, I would like for you to answer two questions for me. Number one is, go back and explain to us again, remind us of what the actual risks are. Mr. Frank came up here, and he said he broke it down into three categories. Number one, 15 to 18 months, he said, he talked about, you know, finishing up his, his design period. So during this time, does that mean that he's not allowed to put any liens on that during that next phase? And then he talked about going into the construction and build out. At that point in time, we got liens. You can't build without a loan. We got liens. So if this project doesn't get built out, or there's a problem, you don't get that land back. Understand that. You will not get that land back. But I'm going to let the city attorney explain that to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cordova. The first risk that I would explain is, because we're at this conceptual stage and we're looking at conceptual feasibility right now, the first risk would be, we have an opportunity cost with moving, with continuing to proceed with this project, because the property's being held off the market, and it could be being used for something else. We're going to probably spend a year in doing the land use entitlements through the planning commission and through the city council for this project if we continue on with it. And that year could be used for something else that the council might want to do with this land. So that is one thing that I would consider to be a risk. Another thing is, no, that without any interest in the land, the developer cannot take out any loans or put any liens on the property during the entitlement process, which they, I think, estimated 15 to 18 months, like you said. But you're right, that once construction were to begin, then assuming that they're getting loans from a bank and they're not just financing it entirely with investor money, then they would be putting liens on the property. And that is a risk to the city if there are liens on the property. We, the city would be getting paid for the property when we sell the property to the developer. Developer can, would be putting some liens on the property. And then one of the protections in the disposition development agreement that we would negotiate and which is going to come back to council in the future, by the way, to approve, so the public will be able to have a full review of this disposition development agreement. But one of the main protections is, if the project stops operating, then the land will revert back to the city. The risk is that when the land reverts back to the city, there will be a bunch of liens on the property that then will, the city will own instead of the property owner, instead of the developer owning. So we would have the purchase price that we received from the developer to help in paying off those liens, but it is not necessarily going to cover all of the liens. And so that's a risk. But we also have an opinion from our consultant that says, if the, if the project is built and the project does not do as well as expected, it is likely to still be cash flow positive. And if it's still cash flow positive, whoever the owner of the project is, whether it's Pale Blue Dot, whether it's someone they sell it to, whether it's a creditor, whether it's a restructuring company that comes in, they are more likely to continue operating the project because it's cash flow positive than they are to just say, we're done, we're going to stop operating and leave. So what that means is, the project would probably keep operating. And the protection in the disposition development agreement that triggers the city's right to take back the property, can't say for certain, but according to the consultant, is likely to not happen. Whoever owns the property, because it's cash flow positive, likely to keep operating it. There's a chance, though, that it would not be cash flow positive, and that whoever takes it over would say, we're just going to stop. And then if it stops operating, land reverts back to the city, which we might have to get into a lawsuit over and just try to get it back, and there could be liens on the property that the city would then have to deal with. And so that is an ultimate risk that could occur. We're going to put everything possible that we can in the disposition development agreement, try to protect the city against that. But that is yet to be negotiated, and it would be negotiated. We're continuing to negotiate it as we speak, and we continue doing that if the MOU is extended.
And City Attorney, just one last question. Who decides what price, if any, that land is sold to Pale Blue Dot, or anybody for that matter?
Well, the council is ultimately going to decide what price that is, and that's a...
And will, will that be public knowledge so that the residents of Lompoc can also give their input at that time?
That's going to be a number that's going to be in the disposition development agreement. Yes.
So that will be public?
Yes. That, that is, an agreement has to be publicly approved by the council.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, just real quick, I'm going to go with the staff recommendations on this meeting. I'll read the staff recommendation. Counselor receive and file the report on the financial feasibility analysis presented by the city's consultant, pro forma advisors regarding the proposed Pale Blue Dot Space Center. The actual vote will happen on the 19th at the council meeting.
So the purpose of this meeting was to make sure that you, the public, got a chance to see the documentation, come forward, ask questions, make sure that we're aware of the questions you have, because you have elected us to do the due diligence on this. We are the ones spending the time digging into these reports, meeting with the consultants, meeting with our staff, meeting with the attorneys, to make sure that as we move this project forward, we're doing it in the best possible way for the entirety of the community. That's our responsibility. So it's a really tough decision, because as Councilmember Cordova says, you, you're going to have a chance to vote as to whether or not to allow 82 acres to go from public property to private property. And once it moves into the private property, they will have an opportunity to potentially purchase the land. And so once you lose those 82 acres, we all know how expensive land is in California, and we might never, ever get 82 acres back that were gifted to us from the federal government for the purpose, as one of our speakers said, for outdoor opportunity, recreation space, or education. So I would love to have a space museum here. I would love to have educational programs. I'm the daughter of a teacher for 30 years. I spent time in the classrooms. Our school system is woefully underserved. As one of the speakers says, we need to support a bond issue. We need to make sure every kid gets an opportunity, and if it's going to have kids going to it, we need to make sure the district has money to pay for those kids to go to a camp. And right now, our district doesn't have the money to even do that. So there, there are a lot of impacts going on with this. The second part you saw was the timeline. This is not going to happen tomorrow. It's going to be anywhere from five to potentially 10 years down the road, depending on how we get through the SEQA, the EIR, 15 to 18 months to find funding, your vote as to whether or not you want to release the land to a public, from public to private, finishing the negotiation on the deed and how to transfer that, then coming in and going through all the planning and getting through all of that. So it's, it's not a quick process. And so, again, we realize you're impatient with this, but because it's such a serious decision with a very long-term impact, we're trying to take the time with it, which is why we held this special meeting. We already voted to accept this report a meeting ago, but we knew it was very low attendance and that you might not see this information. And with an extension needed on the horizon and a potential vote in a year, we needed to make sure you heard and saw this information. So as Councilmember Starbuck has said, this is a receive and file. This is a public discussion, and we want to continue that. There will be more meetings, there will be more opportunities, and we will vote on the extension at the 19th of this month. So I want to thank you for coming out. As more questions evolve, as you choose to dig deeper into these documents, you can email any of us, you can email our city clerk, and she will get it to us, and we will find the answers, and we will share them, and try and do it in a very public way so that all of you get the information back. So, Councilwoman Starbuck, was that a motion to receive and file?
If you need one, it was.
Technically, it is unfinished business, and we need to do it again. So thank you for your motion. Councilmember Ball.
I second it.
Awesome. All right, let's go ahead and vote. That passes 5-0, so we will adjourn to our next regular council meeting at 6:30 PM on December 19th.